Hey, uh, hey guys, I'm here.
Hi, Mr. Come.
How you doing? I'll um, I'll be back in less than thirty two minutes.
Kevin, you can go ahead and call the meeting to order.
Yeah, you're all set, we'll get started, thank you Laura. Okay, I'd like to call the April thirteenth, twenty twenty of the Plen- Meeting of the Planning Board and Zoning Commission, the town of Niskiuna, to order. This meeting is being, uh, remote, uh, via remote meeting software and live stream to the public. Mr. Henry, would you please call the roll?
Mr. LaFlem.
Present.
Mr. Scrub Lieutenant.
Here.
Mr. Khan.
Here.
Mr. McPartlin.
Here.
Mr. Darpino.
Here.
Mr. Oster.
Here.
Chairman Walsh.
Here.
Ms. Shenfield.
Here.
Ms. Gold.
Present.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Henry, I was gonna go down the list here of other people that are, um, participating in the meeting. After I go through the list, if there's anybody that I missed, especially those with phone numbers, will have you, um, identify yourself. So I see we have, um, uh, Mr. Mazurik, Alec, uh, representing the Niskiuna Hospital, Animal Hospital Niskiuna. Uh, we have, uh, let's see, Mr. Rico, also representing the, uh, Animal Hospital Niskiuna. Uh, Laura Robinson, the Town Planner.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, I had to re-sign on it, sorry, okay, good.
We got you, thank you. Uh, let's see. And, uh, it looks like, um, we have Mr. Wheeler, um, I believe he's with AJ Signs for the Dominican Retreat House. And that's soon, and there's a Ron S., I'm not sure who that is.
I'm sure.
That's Mr. Dr. Sharp, okay? Thank you, Dr. Sharp, uh, who did I miss out there?
I'm on the call, Alexis Kim.
Okay Alexis. Deputy Town Attorney. Anybody else?
Um, Brad Durkin from Burnham Nationwide is on the call.
Hey Brad, thank you. And Ms. Fody, are you out there also? And I see Dave Brennan, uh, uh, lawyer representing, I believe, the Animal Hospital Niskiuna just also joined in. So, uh, with that, uh, roll call of everyone, I'd like to get started, if that's okay with everyone. Um, we don't have any minutes to approve tonight on the agenda, but I'd just like to note that we do still have the, uh, February twenty-fourth and the March ninth meeting still outstanding, is that correct Laura?
That's correct, we have two sets of minutes, yep.
And so when we get, uh, get caught up, uh, we'll have those hopefully for next meeting. On the agenda, we have no public hearings tonight, so we'll move right to privilege of the floor, privilege of the floor, Ms. Robertson, we'll read any emails or, uh, correspondence that she received from the public. Hey Laura?
Yep. So I received one comment for privilege of the floor from the public. And it is from Janice Mansfield from Two Brookhaven Drive. She writes, "I am a longtime customer of the Animal Hospital of Niskiuna and want to express my support for the additional space this business is proposing. So many Niskiuna residents depend on services provided and will benefit from them, myself included. I hope the planning board will support Dr. Sharp's plan, thank you for your consideration."
Okay, thank you Laura, that was the only, uh, only one you had, correct?
Yep, and we checked the mailbox as well, and that's all we received for privilege of the floor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we have no unfinished business tonight, so we'll move right to new business. Under new business, we have one resolution tonight, has resolution number twenty twenty dash twelve, the resolution for twenty-seven sixty-four Troy Road, site plan approval for the Animal Hospital of Niskiuna. Um, and in keeping, we won't read the whole resolution, but I'll summarize, basically, uh, this resolution, uh, uh, makes a secret determination, since the ZBA, uh, modified this to an area variance, we need to do our secret determination. And, uh, we have determined this project will not have a significant effect on the environment and direct the town planner to file a negative declaration. Furthermore, the Planning and Board and Zoning Commission does grant final site plan approval for the final site plan with the following conditions. One, the parking lot shall be, shall not be expanded without site plan approval by the planning board. Two, prior to issuance of building permit for the building, the applicants shall submit elevation and landscaping drawings to, to the Architectural Review Board to deliver a new and approval. Ensure the proposed addition is aesthetically integrated to the existing structures. And three, prior to issuance of a building permit, all site creating and engineering shall be addressed to satisfaction of the Town Engineering Department. Mr. Oster, do I have a motion, uh, for the resolution?
Yes, uh, I, I move that we adopt the resolution.
Okay, resolutions we move for adoption by Mr. Oster, do I have a second?
Um, Chairman?
Yep, okay, seconded by Mr. LaFlem, and we can open it up for discussion. Anybody have any comments? I have just one, but, um, let's see if anybody has anything at all.
Well, I think the resolution's now been adjusted, I think, from the, from the ones that were in our packets, there were a couple, there were a couple of technical corrections that had to be, that had to be made to it, that I think you saw in the email that got sent around, uh, a little while ago, I don't know, Laura, if you just wanna...
Yeah, I've got them right here, I'll, good, thank you, I said I was gonna do it, and then I forgot to do it, sorry. Basically, it was a correction of the name, uh, of the business, Animal Hospital Niskiuna, uh, we had a date correction, and just a typo, additional, uh, was actually addition, so very minor modifications from the agenda that was posted, um, on the town website. The only question I had, and I guess it would be the question either for the applicant or for Laura, Ms. Robertson, is looking at the site plan, and maybe Laura, you wanna see if you can pull that up?
Yep. Oops, hold on, I gotta hit share screen.
No problem. And I can talk while you're doing it, the only question I had was regarding the, uh, the parking that's shown on the, uh, site plan that's, uh, submitted, uh, there's no handicap spot, is that a requirement? That we should have a handicap spot, or what was the plan there?
Uh, go ahead.
Uh, this is Dominic, um, the, the, uh, the hatched out area is kind of like the access, um, technical handicap spot, you only need eight feet and five feet for a spot. Um, it's not lined that way, I guess we can put a sign up if we have to, but, um, we didn't think there was a full access need for that, but we can do it.
Yeah, that was my question, I don't know if there's a legal requirement that it has to be delineated with signage or striping, I'm not the expert there.
You will have to, when you're restriping, um, the building inspectors will pick that up, so they typically pick that up after planning board approval, um, so if you wanna incorporate it now, that's definitely better.
Okay. Alright, uh, so I guess, uh, based on that, I, I think it's important that, you know, to have any handicap access, obviously, one of those two spots on the other side of the sidewalk. So I guess I'd make a motion, uh, that we add a condition, a condition number four, that states that the, uh, handicap parking will be, uh, noted on the drawing and, uh, put in place, uh, upon restriping of the parking lot, something along those lines. That sound reasonable?
Makes sense to me.
And basically, just, uh, you know, address the handicap parking and site plan. Alright, do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Oster, um, I guess, uh, I'd say we're all in favor of that minor thing, anybody opposed to that minor correction, amendment to the resolution? Okay, hearing none opposed, we have a modified, um, or amended resolution, uh, any other discussion, anybody or the applicant?
I just, I just wanted to state quickly for the record that, um, you know, and we went through this before, but as we're taking action on it, the variance was changed from use variance to an area variance, and there was a clarification that there's no intensity of use, so there is a note on the on the, um, on the site plan that the parking lot is being expanded, but it's, the asphalt is actually not, not really changing in square footage, which is why they don't need a SWIP or site, um, stormwater erosion sentiment control plan. Um, and they're just kind of maximizing the asphalt that's already there, and it doesn't get put into the resolution, but the CAC said the use is, um, staying the same, and, and, um, what does get put in the resolution is that the parking lot is kind of the controller for how many people you have in the, um, being used, the veterinary at any given time, so the point of this proposal being changed to an area variance is that it's not changing in intensity of use.
Yep, and our condition number one basically, uh, gives us the opportunity that if, uh, in the future, they were to modify the parking lot, it would have to come back to the planning board.
Yeah.
No, so, sounds good, any other comments or anything from the applicant at all? Okay, hearing no other, what, you have anything, Dominic?
No, I would say not, not, not that, uh, at this time, there's nothing.
You okay, anything else? Alright, uh, I guess, uh, hearing no other comments, and, uh, Mr. Henry, would you please call the roll? This is on a amended resolution, that, which includes, uh, uh, delineating the handicap parking.
Mr. LaFlem.
Hi.
Mr. Scrub Tennis.
Hi.
Mr. Khan.
Hi.
Mr. McPartlin. Mr. McPartlin.
He's probably muted.
Mi- Mr. Darpino.
Hi.
Mr. Oster.
Hi.
Chairman Walsh.
Hi.
Mr. Part- McPartlin.
Patrick, oh, go ahead, if, if you have...
If you can hear us, uh, you're muted, is, was what the, you need to turn your mute off.
And Patrick, if for some reason you're having a problem with your, um, video, although, oh, there you are.
I got the microphone to work, sorry about that.
That's okay.
My vote is in the affirmative, yes.
Okay, so it's unanimous, uh, the resolution has passed and the, uh, site plan approval for the, uh, Animal Hospital Niskiuna, um, is taken care of. So thank you everybody, and, and good luck to the applicant, and, uh, we'll be in touch in the future.
Thank you.
Alright, that's it for new business, we only had one resolution tonight, so we'll move into some discussion items. First up for discussion, we have the site plan application for new signage for the Dominican Retreat House at nineteen forty-five Junior Street. And I guess, um, I guess I'll kick that off, uh, we don't have a project lead on that. Um, uh, the agenda packet is pretty thorough, thank you, the planning department, I did have the opportunity to take a ride over there today and take a look around. Basically, they have a pre-existing sign on, uh, Route seven slash Troy's Connecty Road, no signage currently, uh, on, uh, Rosendale Road. So this application asks for a new sign, monument sign on Route seven, and a, uh, sign also on, uh, Rosendale Road. Uh, Laura, in the planning office, has prepared a denial based on only one sign being allowed, and also that both signs, uh, signs exceed the two foot above grade, so that that's all incorporated in the denial letter. So, um, um, basically, this is for discussion tonight, so maybe, uh, I could turn it over to, uh, I guess it'd be Mr. Wheeler, representing the applicant.
Yep, I'm here, um, so basically, uh, you, you hit on ahead what we're trying to do, um, we're gonna replace the existing sign with something, uh, similar in size on Route seven. Um, it's gonna have a retaining wall underneath it, we wanna have the height above grade so that we, uh, don't have a snow or, or grass issue covering the sign. Um, then the, the other entrance on Rosendale Road, uh, that, that's a fairly well-used entrance, so they do want a market, so we came up with a smaller design there. Um, it's something to really identify that, uh, you know, and, as a, as a wayfinding method.
Okay, thank you, um, yeah, it seems like, um, you know, my own personal opinion, driving over, take a look today, that, um, it would appear to be non-intrusive, I know where, we, we try to minimize, uh, the size and location of signs. Just in general, uh, there is an existing sign there already on Troy's Connecty Road, and this looks like it would be an improvement, it's also a pretty busy area over there with some signage and poles and, and so on and so forth, so my, um, my take on it, it doesn't seem like it would be, um, you know, a bad thing to, you know, modify that sign as proposed. Um, uh, as Laura, uh, or Clark has stated in the agenda package, the signs themselves are, are conforming as far as size goes, just a number of signs in the height above grade. Um, I don't know if anybody else, or Laura, or the planning department has any comments at all?
Yeah. This, this is Genghis, I am, so I agree completely about the sign on Troy's Connecty Road, and I think that is gonna be an improvement, and it is a busy area. Um, I, I'm actually in favor also of the sign on Rosendale, but I just wanted us to discuss that a little bit more. We, you know, I'm just looking at setting precedents, I mean, it's, might be straightforward in that there's no other facilities like that in that area on Rosendale. Um, but, you know, there is another driveway there heading to the synagogue too, I just wanna make sure that, you know, that we, um, you know, that what we do there is, 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 is gonna be something that's, that's reasonable, and, and not setting a precedent for, uh, putting more signs up on Rosendale.
Okay, yeah, I was thinking about that too, Genghis, I think you mentioned the second drive, I'm thinking having a sign prevents people going in and out, because they went in the wrong driveway, and it may actually improve the safety on Rosendale.
Yeah, yeah, there's already some directional signs once you get on the property, but there's no sign out on the road, so, it seems to be reasonable, I don't have it in front of me, but I think this, could you, Mr. Wheeler, could you tell us the size of the sign on Rosendale?
Uh, this is eighteen inches by twenty inches, so it's fairly small, we, just, just big enough to be seen.
Yep. And that was a hanging sign with a chain, I believe, right?
Yep, it's on a single pole, it's hanging, um, the top of the pole will be about six feet, so the sign itself is only four feet off the ground.
No illumination?
Say it again?
Illumination on the sign on Rosendale?
No.
It's not. Thank you, that, that works for me.
Okay, and the colors as per in the drawings, right, that we have?
Uh, yeah, it's like a burgundy color with a white pole.
I'm just gonna share my screen real quick, here we go.
Yeah, I'm looking at it here locally, but it might be good to share.
Yeah, so that's the one on Rosendale.
That sign is the same size as the, the law office on Balltown Road across from CVS.
Right.
Good.
And then this one is the, that's the um, that one is slightly smaller than the one on Route seven now, only by like a square foot, but it has the, um, retaining wall and stuff, which the other one sort of looks like a a directional sign almost.
Yeah, yeah, the one that's gonna go on Rosendale, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at it here, if it's okay if you can share, it's in the public record, I think, in the, in the meeting now, so.
Let me ask, does anybody have any concerns with, with the signage at all on Rosendale or on, on Route seven?
Oh, I didn't, did I not share? Oh, did you guys, were you not, was my screen not shared?
No, you didn't share it yet, one.
Sorry, okay, there's the Rosendale Road one. And there's, uh, Route seven one.
Any other comments at all regarding the signage? So Laura, we do have a, um, uh, denial letter, but I think we're not prepared tonight to give the details of, you know, of the basis for our recommendation. Um, we'll have to get a project lead, and, uh, we'll do that at our next meeting, which is scheduled for the twenty-seventh.
Yes, so the zoning board meeting is the twenty-ninth, um, as long as it, it feels like this meeting is going well, as long as we feel like we could have a twenty-seventh meeting, then I think that what makes the most sense is to put it on the twenty-seventh.
I do, I, I think so also, and then we can get some, uh, specific details, you know, about the size not being illuminated, uh, minimal impact on their residential neighborhood, things along those lines, and a part of our recommendation to the zoning board, the fields, or the area variances.
Right, and I think the point that Mr. LaFlem made is, is, is a good one also.
Yes, yep.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, this is, uh, Mike Scrub Tennis, if you look for a project lead, I'll, I'll, I'll bow.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Scrub Tennis, uh, the applicant, uh, Mr. Wheeler, right, uh, you have any comments or questions at all, or?
Well, we'll have another planning meeting on the twenty-seventh, and then ZBA on the twenty-ninth.
That's correct.
Okay.
We'll make our recommendation on the twenty-seventh, and that'll carry forward to the, uh, ZBA, and then we'll see what the ZBA comes up with, and if, uh, they support, uh, our recommendation, and, and just a B building permit will be required.
Sounds good.
Okay, alright, Mr. Wheeler, thank you for joining in, and we'll talk to you on the twenty-seventh. Alright, and anything else further on that, Dominican, Dominican Retreat? Okay, seeing nothing fur- further, we'll close the discussion on Dominican Retreat, and we'll move on to the next discussion item, which is, uh, tenant change application for America's Best Contacts and eyeglasses at fourteen eighteen Balltown Road, Suite B. Uh, this is the previous location of Vision Works. Um, and so basically, uh, they moved across the street, Vision Works to, uh, Mansion Square, and, um, we have an applicant, America's Best, is looking, um, to move into the, uh, area that they vacated at fourteen Balltown Road. And it sounds like we have Mr., um, who we have representing the applicant? Somebody's on the line.
Yes, uh, Brad Durkin's here.
Oh, Mr. Durkin, I'm sorry, I didn't write it down.
No worries, no, that's okay.
Alright, so you want, you wanna brief us on, uh, your thoughts there, uh, of what your plans are? You don't have to.
Sure, yes, no, not a problem, sir, it's pretty straightforward, uh, just interior remodel, as you mentioned, it's, uh, was, uh, old Vision Works, uh, America's Best wants, uh, wasn't be the new tenant, we submitted building plans to Mr. Hassett. Uh, Mr. Hassett had approved our building plans for the interior fit-out, um, I sent the site plan to Mr. Henry and Mrs. Robertson, and, um, pretty straightforward, um, it's about fifty-six, fifty-six hundred square feet, um, standard America's Best, uh, signage, there's nothing new here, we've done quite a few of these for the design team throughout the country. Um, so from what I've seen from the past projects, this is, um, basically a similar signage that they, what they've used in the past, so, um, nothing different there. Uh, it looks like it's between the Five Guys Restaurant and GNC, um, so there's no side signage, obviously, just front and rear, um.
Yep.
That's, that's pretty much it, sir, pretty straightforward.
Yeah, and thank you, and, uh, and what's nice is, uh, there's no variances, this is a basically a tenant change, all the sign, signage is in compliance. Um, right Laura, because we got two basically interior roads, so they're allowed to, uh, facade signs, and they fall within the, uh, recommended square footage, so, um, I mean, I don't wanna say it's a slam dunk or anything, but it seems to be pretty straightforward, um, uh, to me.
Same business, right?
Yep, yeah, I mean, parking should be the same, uh, everything should be the same, basically, uh, just to change the tenant, uh, um, resolution is what we're looking at. Um, so I guess for Mr. Durkin, uh, what's, what's your time, and is it something that we want to act on at the, um, next meeting at April twenty-seventh, or is it, did you wanna hold off till you're ready?
Uh, the twenty-seventh would be great, sir, I know I talked to, uh, Mrs. Robertson and Mr. Uh, Henry and, uh, Mr. Hassett, and I talked to the design team and my client, uh, Cushion Wadefield. And it's their intent to move forward with the permits and try to start work within, uh, within the six-month timeframe, that's, uh, law by the building department. And they feel like they wanna, um, pursue the permit and, and, uh, specifically before the code change on May fifteenth, so that they could proceed with the work you done, um. They wanna, their intent is to complete the project before the end of the year, twenty twenty, but they might spill into the, uh, early into the new year, but they definitely wanna start, uh, work as, as, as soon as possible, once the, um, the stop work orders lifted, um, to, you know, uh, based on the current, current circumstance, so.
That sounds good, um, Ms. Robertson or Mr. Henry, you have anything to add or any thoughts?
Um, no, he's just, he's just speaking of, the remodel is not considered essential construction, so he can go through the planning board and get his building permit, and he would hold it until the governor's ban was lifted, and then they could start construction.
Okay, so if there's no objections, uh, I, I suggest that we have a resolution granting tenant, uh, change approval for the next meeting, um, for the April twenty-seventh meeting?
Agreed.
Anybody have any concerns at all? Okay, I don't hear any concerns, seems to be straightforward, need to keep saying that, but, uh, you know, similar business, so it's, it's good news, vacant, uh, property and, uh, you know, getting a, uh, business back in there, that's good news. Okay, anything else, Mr. Durkin or playing department?
Nothing from me, sir.
Okay, well, thank you for joining in, and we'll have a resolution, uh, for the April twenty-seventh meeting.
Wonderful, thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Okay, uh, planning agenda, that brings us to reports, um, Ms. Robertson, anything?
Um, I didn't, I don't have anything written on the agenda, but, I mean, following up on the construction ban, Lake Rivers Ledges slowing down slash stopping until they find out what's going on, um, oh, the majority of the big projects that we've looked at right now are kind of on hold, um, and I specifically, Clark and I specifically only put very small things on the agenda tonight to see how it'd work. I know that, you know, people are watching for Vincenzo and watching for the Celts, and the question is, do we think that we can do this electronically, or do we wanna wait and see if we can hold all of these things in, put it, you know, in a public forum, like an actual public forum? Uh, you know, possibly in May.
Well, I guess I give you my, my thoughts, the, um, Vincenzo, I believe where we're at is basically a preliminary subdivision approval, is that correct, so they can?
That's correct.
So I think we've kinda worked through the issues there, uh, but it's, it's preliminary, um, do we have everything we need on drainage, and are, are we comfortable where we stand there?
So we just received the drainage analysis and the SWIP, and we're handing it over to the TDE to review, and our next step would be to call for a public hearing. Um, so, the TD would have some time to review it, and we could, if we put it on the planning board agenda, potentially call for a public hearing on the twenty-seventh, that was what our next step was going to be originally, um, but how we actually hold a public hearing, if, we could call for one in May, uh, with the understanding that it may still have to be virtual, or it may be able to actually be a public hearing, we haven't held a public hearing virtually yet on any of our town board platforms.
This is Alexis Kim speaking, I'm sorry, are you guys able to hear me? It's Alexis Kim.
Yes.
I just wanted to say that the governor's executive order, um, last week, specifically, uh, contemplated public hearings and said we're able to call for public hearings, the town board's gonna have three public hearings on the thirtieth. Um, you can tentatively put it on the agenda, or else we can push it till May, but we don't, we don't really know, based on the governor's sorry, and my daughter is just so got in the background, I know, but, um, since we don't really know, the governor made it clear, if you guys have been watching his briefing, that we're gonna be ramping up somewhat slow, so I wouldn't be putting it on the back corner if it's something that we can do virtually. Um, as long as it's okay with the applicant.
So what I was thinking, and the applicant would definitely be okay, is that we put out that we're having a public hearing, and then we ask anybody who wants to speak at that public hearing to notify me that they wanna speak, and then I'll give them the invite and line them up and organize them to speak to you at the public hearing, potentially?
Yeah, either that, or we could do through, like, I mean, what we've been doing for privilege of the floor, which obviously is different than public hearing, if we set up a separate email account, like called like Public Hearing, you know, at niskiuna.org, we could do the same thing for planning boards. Um, and people could submit emails, or else they could do, you know, the virtual option you just mentioned Laura, I know with privilege of the floor, we didn't have any problem getting comments from town boards, so I think we just have to notice it properly, you know, make sure we're clear in saying, email this address. Um, but yeah, but either option, I think is fine.
Do we, do we need to have the TE, TDE input before we hold the public hearing for Vincenzo?
I definitely think we should, um, if we call for it on the twenty-seventh, um, it would still be in May, so that gives the TDE a whole month to be able to review it.
Okay, alright, so next meeting, we just call for the public hearing, and then we'd have the time to work out the details, uh, whether it's purely email or some combination of email, and having anybody who wants to speak logging into the, uh, meeting. Um, so it gives us time, so I think that seems reasonable to, um, at least tentatively put it on the, uh, agenda, calling for the public hearing. And first, we'll talk to the applicant, um, between now and the next meeting, see if you're sure that they're ready also, right?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure both, both applicants wanna be moved forward, it's just a question of making sure that there's kind of adequate ways of communicating with the public on what's going on.
Yeah, no, I agree, we wanna make sure it's open.
I would like to, I would like to suggest something else, however, given
I, I would like to just, I would like to suggest something else, however, given the governor's, um, uh, exclusion of construction work, um, as essential. Um, I don't know if there's any harm if we were to delay some of these acts, given the fact that neither of these developers can really proceed with work under the current restrictions. So that's just a countervailing idea that we should contemplate.
Yeah. Agreed. We're essentially not the, we're not the delaying force here. We're just trying to...
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with Mr. Scraby Tennis on that one. I think that, I understand perfectly well that we can conduct business online and we can actually continue with it. Um, but if there is another limiting factor of actually work getting done, which is the, uh, the governor's order. You know, I would, gi- given the nature of the public comment we've heard and definitely Vincenzo and absolutely, I think also for the new work over at, uh, Celts Farm in Windsor. I think that, um, in the bare minimum, even if you were to hold a virtual public hearing, uh, you know, we'd like to make an assessment as to how smoothly that would have gone and how smoothly people were able to actually voice their opinions, et cetera. But coming back to Mr. Scraby Tennis's point, I don't, i- if, if they can't get construction started anyway, then, you know, moving to public hearing by a week or two might not be such a detrimental thing. But that's just one person's opinion.
No, that's, that's a good comment.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we're being, this is Alexis again. Sorry that I'm on the video conference. Um, just one thing is if we're gonna be delaying it, I would say that we wanna be equitable across the board on any action items that, you know, we feel this, we don't wanna make, you know, uh, subjectively say, you know, some, we shouldn't do public hearings on some projects because, you know, the public probably has a lot of input they wanna share. I think we should be consistent across the board saying we're not gonna be acting on any items that we can't, they can't construct or move forward under the governor's orders. Or we should say, you know, we're gonna proceed, assuming that we're gonna have to be doing virtual meetings probably, you know, indefinitely.
Yeah, I agree.
And that's the only, uh, project we have right now that's in queue for a public hearing. Is that correct, Laura?
That's correct. We held the public hearing on the Celts Farm, but the outcome of the public hearing on the Celts Farm is that we wanted to have a public dialogue about the Windsor Road connection. Um, Joel did send in a new drawing that has like a T, sort of a double-esque curve that I don't, that, you know, we could discuss at the next meeting, um, which he would like for us to do, would be at least to discuss the new configuration. Um, so I'm okay with that. I just wanna make sure. And tonight was a trial. It did seem like we were able to communicate with the applicants, that we can put them on and discuss things with them and at least have meaningful conversations.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree that, uh, it seemed to go pretty well and I think, um, where we're at with the Celts Farm is we're not ready to make a recommendation. There's still information that we need to get, right? We talked about traffic, uh, I don't know if it's a study or at least analysis to some degree, and I know that the town is looking to put out their, um, new speed sign, which also collects data, but of course, uh, it's a bad time for either of those things to occur because it wouldn't be representative of actual conditions based on people, you know, obviously not working or, uh, owning a school. So, but we could have a discussion about the latest, uh, site plan, you know, geometry. What do you think, David?
I wanted, yeah, I wanted to weigh in on it only because, you know, being in my industry, we're watching what the governor's, um, issues are each week and it's very fluid and it does change. So even though it may not be essential, there's still a lot of planning and engineering and stuff that can happen so that when the construction ban is fully lifted, at least they won't be behind one, two, or three months. Uh, there's a lot of upfront work that could get, get them going and then they could line up things, whether they do actually, each other ready this year, that may not be the case. I think with Vincenzo, he's far enough along that we could probably go to the next step with it, but the Celts Farm is still in a very preliminary phase right now that should get vetted out.
Yeah, good comments. I, um, I agree. Uh, I mean,
Laura.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry, this is Alexis Kim. Laura, did the applicant for Celts Farm, I know he has sent an email mentioning, was he in a position that he wanted to move forward at least in planning? I didn't get a chance to respond.
Yeah, he would definitely like to at least discuss the, the next configuration. I had said we really need that traffic study and he made the same point that Kevin did, that right now you really can't do a traffic study. Um, so a traffic study is pretty cr- is pretty critical to deciding on, to understanding what all the issues are and what the implications are for the different configurations. But, I mean, it doesn't hurt to, I mean, it doesn't hurt to discuss with him another, um, you know, an update to the site plan that shows some more traffic calming measures. It's just the main issue, which is really an understanding of how many cars are going there, what, where they're coming from now, um, is still out there.
Oh, yeah, I, I meant to bet on this, you know, Laura, I saw that there was that the traffic study is going forward, but it's based on cell phone historical data, so is it just contingent on the traffic study? Would be crucial to having our next discussion. There's no point of having the discussion if we don't have the traffic study data, is that's the point?
You can look at the configuration, right, and you guys weigh in here and you can say, yeah, that definitely looks like it's more traffic calming, but you probably really, at some point need to have the data in front of you so you can make an informed decision.
I agree with you, Laura. I mean, basically, we could just talk about the new configuration, um, the status and I think we're kinda have to wait to get the data in order to even, uh, you know, talk to the public about it or to make a recommendation to the town board. We need the information, which right now is not the time to get it, obviously, so. But we can talk about the new configuration. Advantages of the new configuration.
And this is Leslie. I think regarding Vincenzo, it really doesn't make sense to me to delay because we don't know when the, and will be lifted. It might be sooner than we think. And again, as David said, delays are very costly to the developers. If got, I guess lined up, to at least undermine that.
Yep. Um, uh, David, um, you're the project lead for Vincenzo, correct?
Correct.
So, you know, I agree with, uh, what you're saying, you know, because there's engineering, it can, can occur. Um, should, um, you, would you recommend that we go forward with the public hearing and, and we'll start working with, uh, Laura and the applicant? And if we can't pull it off because it's too cumbersome, well, then we'll push it out, but you, you know, what's, what's the board's view? Should we go ahead and at least give it a try and start working in that direction?
So I think, and maybe Alexis can look this up, but with, with what the governor's issued, um, even as lately as today, I think some construction, even if it's not essential, can be done if it's a sole proprietorship. So if he was going to be clearing lots or digging a foundation or something and he had one person or, you know, there, there may be provisions in the interpretations of the current, the current protocols that may allow some construction to be done. You won't see a job site with thirty people on it, um, because of the proximity that they can't be with each other, uh, within six feet of each other. But I think in thi- in this for Vincenzo, I would say let's at least get it to the next step to get through the, the TD and, um, go, go forward with the public hearing. That would be my recommenda- my recommendation.
So the, um, the minor subdivision, we, I think are required by law to do the secret determination when we call the public hearing. Um, and it has a recommendation for a neg deck from the CAC with a big caveat in there that you guys really take care and study the stormwater impact because they heard the same concerns that you have heard. So, I mean, what, what, what I would propose is that, that we would have a tentative resolution on there for secret determination and public hearing and within that time, see if we can get the TDE to review it and have comments because there's a lot of outstanding questions for the people on Vincenzo Drive on stormwater. And then we could discuss it at the next meeting and have the applicant online to be able to answer questions.
I think that, that's reasonable.
I think it's reasonable. Is there anybody that's opposed to that? I know it's hard with this meeting, but is there anybody opposed with having a, uh, resolution for seeker and calling for the public hearing? The public hearing would not be held until our first meeting in May, whatever that date is.
Mr. Chairman, just as a reminder, I, I, I am, I am exempting myself from those discussions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Austin.
And, and I'm not opposed with that at all and, um, I think that's something favorable. It's just that, like I said, at the end of the day, when we do hold that public hearing, if it is virtual, just for us to make an assessment that we felt the public was represented.
Yep, cool. Okay. Anybody else opposed? Okay, hearing no one opposed. I think, uh, Laura, that sounds like the thing to do. Obviously, we'll talk to the applicant to make sure they're, uh, on board with that. It sounds like they, they are, but, uh, we definitely would like some feedback from the TDE regarding stormwater, um, water flows on the site, because that's the key to this, uh, project. Okay? All right, so I think we're okay on Celts Farm and on Vincenzo. Laura, you have anything else, uh, for reports that you wanna talk about?
Um, not unless you guys have s- specific questions and there is a lot of change. All of my department is working from home. Um, but I feel like we're still doing the best we can and moving things along when we can.
Laura, are building inspectors out and about or no?
Um, they are very limited. They are, there's one of them in the office three out of the five days of the week. Um, they're in the office in the morning and they do outside inspections where they don't have to interact with people in the afternoon and they are, you know, limiting things to sole, single workmen on site, essential and emergency construction.
Okay. Have you been receiving any complaints that?
Yeah, we did, uh, reach out to people and let them know, you know, there's a construction ban. We have only received one complaint.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Laura, the reports for the planning office?
You know, Mr. Chairman, just one other comment. Is it connected with the governor's ban? It, it, it's also reasonable to assume, right, that most lenders and financing is, is also curtailed. So not only do we have the governor's ban limiting construction work, but it's, right now, there's, there are very few lenders who are closing on new construction projects. So that's a downstream effect for us to take into account. Um, there is more to it than just the governor's ban. No lenders are providing financing in this current environment that I know of.
Thank you. All right, no, nobody has any other questions for the planning department and we'll just move on on the agenda. Uh, next up would be commission business. Mr. Oster, do you have anything for us?
I do not.
Okay, Mr. Diopino?
Uh, yeah, so I'll give an update, uh, once a month on the architectural review board. So we had an initial meeting and it went very well with the, uh, participants that are on the, on the committee before the, before the meeting ban took place. And we're gonna be working on developing the responsibilities of the board. And Clark has put together two projects, uh, which is the Animal Hospital and Ace Hardware for the board to look at. And he's also been doing some great legwork on looking at neighboring municipalities to see what their, um, historic or, um, architectural review boards have been doing, uh, to help us put together our, our list of key items.
Great. Thank you, David.
That's it.
All right, and, uh, Mr. McPartlin?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Khan?
Nothing from here, thanks.
And Mr. Um, Scraby Tennis?
Nothing for me.
And Mr. Laflamme?
Okay.
Nothing? Okay, I just got, uh, two items, I believe. Laura, I just, uh, David just reminded me of something. For the, uh, 1448 Balltown Road, the, um, uh, denial letter that you prepared, uh, not the denial letter, but our recommendation to the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah.
Um, um, under the suitability, it said we voted seven zero, but in the text it said six to one, so just take a look at that.
Oh, okay.
All right, um, and I just, thank you for, uh, David just brought that to my attention. I meant to tell you that when I reviewed the fact, all right? Um, no big deal, I, but I, we'd have to, I don't remember the meeting and, uh, you'd have to look at the tape to see if it was seven zero or six to one, but, okay?
I think it was six to one.
Just under suitability, all right? And that was the only thing, the only other thing I have obviously is thank you and planning department for this and, uh, your hard work. And, uh, thank you to everybody else and please be safe and, um, um, hang in there. Not easy. But to hang in there.
I think it works, right? You guys wanna keep trying it? I think it works.
I think it works good.
Yeah, it works great.
Yeah.
Yeah, better, better than I, I imagined, so thank you.
Yeah, I, 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 I just think the only is making sure whatever it is, there's a way, meaningful way for the public to provide
Yeah.
comment. I think that, that to me is, as long as you can replicate that, that to me is the, the most important thing.
Yeah, so we'll give that a try at the next meeting.
Yeah, we have, we have low attendance, right? You'll, you'll note that when you have a lot of, uh, subscribers that are really over, it could overwhelm the system. It gets, it gets a little sloppy, so we just have to really test.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Scr- and we always have the opportunity, if, look, and if things don't go right, if there's a problem, you know, we, we pull the plug, right? We do, we do great things. We always have that opportunity.
Yep, exactly.
Yeah, so we'll put it out there that we're gonna try at the next meeting to bring these things that have a lot more public interaction and see how it works.
And Laura, your idea to, um, to get a list of people ahead of time to basically give them an order of when they do speak, I think that makes sense and then to even have them unmute prior to that, so then you're in control somehow.
I can mute anyone. I can't unmute them.
Yeah.
Is the problem.
And if they choose not to. I guess even just making sure that happens.
Yeah, well, I can train them ahead of time as well. Yeah.
And if they choose, uh, not to, not to speak, but to submit a letter or an email or drop, they'd have either option, right? Okay, um, anybody have anything else? Or call for adjournment? Okay, I can have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Khan in second.
So moved.
Second by Mr. Laflamme. I guess anybody opposed to adjourning? Signify. Anybody opposed? Okay, nobody's opposed, so I'm gonna call the, uh, adjournment of the, uh, April 13th meeting at, uh, 7:46 PM. Uh, thank you, everybody, and, uh, we'll catch you next time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Have a good day, everybody.
Thank you.